Welcome to Ararat Rural City Meeting for August 2019. Council is keen to engage with members of the community and now live streams the formal council meetings to make them accessible. The stream will be available to view on Ararat Rural City Council's Facebook page at 6pm and on council's website, www ararat.bic.gov.au from Wednesday morning following the council meeting. You do not require a Facebook account to watch the live broadcast, simply enter www.facebook.com/araratruralcitycouncil into your address bar. Please be upstanding. Traditional acknowledging councillor Bradford.
We acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging.
Almighty God, we humbly ask that you help us as elected councillors of the Ararat Rural City Council, guide our deliberations, prosper what is your will for us, to your honour and glory and to the welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in the Ararat Rural City. Councillors pledge.
Councillor pledge. We will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interest of the people of the municipal district of the Ararat Rural City Council and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretions vested in us under the Local Government Act 1989 or any act to the best of our skills and judgement.
Thank you, Mr Seaton. There are no apologies. Confirmation of the minutes of the meeting held on the 16th of July 2019. Am I willing to move that, councillor Armstrong, councillor Dorridge, who wish to speak to the minutes? If not, I'll put them all those in favour, against its pass. Are there any declarational disclosure of interest?
Please, sir.
No. Okay. Is there any admission of urgent business? No. No requests to address councillors?
No.
No one in the gather? No deputations or presentations? There are no petitions? Report's cap requiring councillor 3.1.
Under section 1.1 of the Local Government Act, council can delegate members of council staff, the powers, duties and functions set out in the instrument. All delegations have recently been reviewed on a regular basis and they've recently been reviewed. The current review includes several minor changes to staff and includes legislative inflation changes to the provisions under section 185 of the Local Government Act and section 61.2A of the Planning and Environment Act 1987. The delegation schedule is included in the document to this report.
Are there any questions for the officer? If there are no questions, anyone willing to move the recommendation, councillor Bradford, councillor Armstrong, do you wish to speak, councillor Bradford? Anyone wish to speak? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against its pass. 3.2, thank you again.
As with the previous report, delegations, these are appointments and authorisations and again are reviewed on a regular basis. The one that's presented tonight is, the only changes to this appointment is the several minor changes to staffing and the schedule is also included for council's information.
Are there any questions of the officer? If not, anyone willing to move the recommendation?
Certainly.
Councillor Holgwood, anyone second? Councillor Dorridge, do you wish to speak, councillor? Anyone wish to speak? If not, I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour, against its pass. 3.3.
A review of the councillor's support and reimbursement expenses policy has recently been undertaken. The review took into account the recommendations from the Victorian Auditor General's order on corruption control report into local government, which was released in June 2019. Along with the review of the policy, the associated council forms were also reviewed and both now include changes as recommended in the VAGO report. Some changes to the policy and forms include that the professional membership and subscription section is deleted, ensuring that appropriate receipts and tax invoices are included with all claims, inclusion of vehicle details, odometer readings and explanation of purpose of business has also been included and all claims to include details of benefits to the community and a signed confirmation by councillors. Councillor's expenses are uploaded on the council website once every month.
Are there any questions for the officer? Any comments? Do you wish to move the recommendation? Councillor Holgwood, do you wish to speak, councillor?
I'll just just say, Mr May, it's common sense, I think.
I'll just make a comment that it's quite now, quite clear, in the past it was a bit of ambiguity, particularly if we adopt the auditor general's recommendations when they come out, we're doing what they tell us to do. Also, can I just add, there is no indication that anything's gone wrong in the past or recently, it's just a complete and utter update. So if no one else wishes to speak, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against its pass. 3.4, quarterly performance, that being.
Thank you, Mr May. This is really a preview to our final, I was actually manual accounts as well, so this is our final quarterly report for the year. I suppose the highlights of that are if we turn to the comprehensive income statement, there's some good news there for us, I think. It's fair to say that we were projecting a comprehensive result of a deficit of $2.72 million and our actual result is a surplus of $3.99 million. That's a fairly turnaround during the period, that 12 months. Some of that is in relation, has been due to increases in grant revenue during that period, savings made through staffing, restructure changes and also some change we made around freezing expenditure around a whole range of category on the 2017-2018 budget. So that's where we've ended up there. The really good news in that is we've had a cash surplus of $2.74 million for the year, which we're able to put into reserve for a whole range of purposes, which I'll talk about in a moment. But the other, the other good result is we've had a $1.027 million increase in our projected capital works program for the period too, so that all counts against our asset renewal program, which is all good news during that period. From that cash surplus, we're able to fund a range of, we're able to put in reserve opportunity range, range of other initiatives that we spoke about last week, and that is domestic waste water plan, some more work around fitness centre development, electric car charging points, gravel road belt mounts, tree works, we've got an aging tree population, as you know, that we need to do some additional work on, some depth up improvements, structural works to urban buildings, decryulator maintenance, culled extensions, some work around Arat co-working space, some additional expenditure there, Bendigo Bank and our, sorry, Ararat Rural City Council projects, some work around Arat retail strategy, retail facade grants, digital transformation of the organisation, some provision around funding our contribution towards Arat regional amount by track and also the Arat's development zone and some work around more broadly, some infrastructure upgrades. So I think we're able to use all that cash, cash surplus in meaningful ways for the community in that space.
Any questions, councillor Bradford?
Yeah, Mr Seo, that's a very good result, but the additional projects that you've just outlined, 2.65 million.
Yes.
That's a significant change to our budget.
It is, yes.
And will need to be reported to the minister.
It will, yes, yeah, we'll report that.
Any other questions? If not, someone willing to move the recommendations, councillor Bradford, councillor Holgwood, do you wish to speak to it?
No.
Anyone wish to speak to it?
Yes, please, Mr May. I think that this is a very significant report. I think that this is based on a budget which was actually developed by the previous interim CEO and the council together and that our new CEO took over later last year and I think the result is absolutely amazing. I think it's a great endorsement of the work that he and the staff have done. If you think that there was a surplus of 3.99 million against a budget deficit of 2.72 million, that's a turnaround of 6.719 million in the budget and in anybody's book, that's a very significant turnaround. So I think that we should congratulate the CEO and his staff for the work that he's done in implementing the strategic plan at our council, finding ways to cut expenditure and the additional things that we've been able to put into the community are fantastic. One of the things that he did was to reduce employee costs by about 448,000. That is sometimes accompanied by pain, but he's still managing to work with a very good workforce. We've put a lot of work into the community. There is 11.633 million was spent on infrastructure, including roads, bridges and buildings, all of this work is community-wide. The extra expenditure allowed by the reduction in, or the surplus is spread right across the community and I think that's a fantastic outcome. This is a very small snapshot that I've just put forward, but I think it's a very satisfactory end of year result and I'd like to congratulate everybody in the council, CEO and staff.
Anyone?
Yes, Mr May, I do. Mr May, I'd just like to address the council on the issue of being reported so often and getting into all the strife that councillor Kepham, councillor Ford, councillor Mcleary and myself got. We tried to pull this back going back about three years ago and we got absolutely bashed up and I feel very proud of the fact that we've been proved right, that things weren't right within this organisation. It took a lot of heartache and a lot of desperation, I'm feeling a bit nervous now, to actually stand here and say that things went right, but we had the courage to do that and now we can witness this turnaround and I'd like to congratulate the new CEO for the work he's gone to, but we proved that what we were doing was right and all of the bashing out that we got was absolutely wrong and I stand by that.
That's Mr Seaton.
And I hope that the state government takes note of this and reads the Ararat Regional Council inquiry report again and act and say that we're wrong.
As the two councillors have mentioned, the Northern Ireland Report and the past, my point of view is of course that this has very little to do with that. That was all about the rate of construction and changing rates, you know, at any stage went to the infrastructure position that we're now in and I'll just leave that.
It wasn't.
Well, history is wrong. Can I just add that I support councillor Holgwood's comments and make this up a comment. The amount of money that we've saved and we're using surplus is not a win for the game, it's been used because when you just look at the figures, it's surplus of. But it's been used to address key areas of community concern and it's not been used for flights of. And I think those two key things are very important as well. Councillor Bradford, do you wish to?
No.
If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against pass. And 3.5, Mr Seo.
Thank you, Mr May. This is an opportunity council has to join into a power purchasing agreement with 45 other councils around Victoria, which looks at purchasing renewable energy for use by council. It will yield savings of 25% and 25% over a 10-year period that we enter into the PPA for, to cancel our current electricity bill. You know, I was pretty shocked when I saw this, actually, it's $400,000 per hour. So if we're looking at four, if we're looking at five to 35% savings on that potentially, that's a pretty good gain to council again. And it also provides an opportunity to, I guess, support the renewable energy market, which we're an active player with having far the technology and other technologies we're talking about at the moment. I think that's all inside, Mr May.
Any questions for the CEO? If not, someone willing to move the recommendation, councillor Bradford and Holgwood, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, Mr May. I must admit that I was actually out at the wind farm when the people from Melbourne actually came up, the city of Melbourne and another, a number of other consortiums in Melbourne came up and they were talking so proudly about the fact that they'd purchased renewable energy and I guess I went out there and I didn't know a lot about what was going on because Ararat wasn't included and it was out of our boundary. But while we were out there, I was interviewed and there was a great excitement with the fact that Melbourne had finally recognised the fact that renewable energy was the way to go and it was great to actually be part of that absolute celebration. And when you drive around there and you see all these towers and the fact that Ararat's been one of the leading lights, I guess, on renewable energy over the years and I think we should be very proud of that. We still do have our energy park out the road, that is basically something that we've got up our sleeve, but renewable energy has always been at the heart of Ararat and I'm very proud of the fact that we're one of the leading lights in it.
Anyone else wish to speak, councillor Bradford?
Yeah, I'm very happy that this report's been presented to us. It was a campaign of mine back in the day, but tried to achieve this and I endorse what councillor Holgwood said, is that the community of Ararat and the council of Ararat have always been extremely proactive in this area and I'm glad to see this again.
Thank you. All those in favour?
I didn't get this.
Oh, I'll change it round, you move the motion, any second. I just said councillor Bradford, sorry.
No, I just wanted to say that this is a win-win situation because not only are we supporting renewable energy, which is important in this era of climate change, but also it's going to lead to a decrease in cost to council and anything that costs us less in our facilities means that we have more money to put back into the community itself, which is correct as well.
I'll now put the motion, all those in favour, against pass. I have 3.6, councillors, it's the document that was handed to the board meeting and advisory meeting, 3.6, Wickliffe Action Group, Wickliffe Common, section 86, committee.
The Wickliffe Action Group, Wickliffe Common, it's been a section 86 committee since 2006. The original service level agreement act, the committee's responsibility inspecting the claim and mowing of the Wickliffe Common, which was located at 31 Orca Street, Wickliffe. With changes to the committee over a period of time, it's been identified that the original service levels have changed. The Wickliffe Action Group have advised that they would like to re-establish their committee as a community group, the Wickliffe area and the district. It's considered appropriate for the Wickliffe Action Group to continue as an independent committee and that the Wickliffe Action Group, Wickliffe Common, section 86, committee has to resolve and council officers will work with the Wickliffe Action Group.
Any questions for the officer, councillor Holgwood?
Passing the management to this committee, it is still council aim and is there any risk management that needs to be dealt with as a result, by the council?
Well, the contract will be changed to, the cleaning contract.
Yeah, the only risk, sorry if I'm late, but the only risk that council will face around this is the fact that the common committee are actually engaging a claim and decline public contract, that'll become part of our claim and contract at that point in time and free the common committee up to become an action group, the Wickliffe community, as opposed to having a job to do on council's behalf. I think it just really mitigates the risk issues involved there.
One more question. Were they still be available to apply for council grants?
When they become incorporated.
When they become incorporated, I'm sorry, they'll be free up to do that.
Because I had been out there and shared their meetings and I must admit that the first meeting I went to, there was about 35 people there, so they're very, very strong out there and I just wondered if that would make a difference in case anything changed.
Well, I'll just make a comment, I think this will actually strengthen the community group instead of being just restricted to the common, that may be able to look after the whole group. The people I spoke to out there are very supportive of this, as long as council still supports them and under this council, I can't see that not happening. So anyone else wish to ask the officers any questions? If not, I'll move on.
Sorry if I'm late, I just remember the Wickliffe group, they're quite happy with this approach, we've negotiated this, it's not something we're imposing, it's a suggestion we made that they've taken up fully, so there's no sense of this being imposed on in any way, it's a conversation, I've conducted with them very clearly and very professionally, so I don't think there's a problem around that element.
Councillor Holgwood? Councillor Armstrong, would you wish to speak to it?
I think it's an excellent example of us giving the community more control over their facilities and what they do in their community and so I think it's an excellent idea.
Anyone else wish to speak? I spoke out of the way before, so I think you had my job. If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against its pass. Section 4, 4.1, building approval, there's a number of approvals there.
Can I just ask the question that Dan on permit number 201912, 19 straight 2, that should be round the other way, shouldn't it?
Which ones are approvals by our ones?
68 bits.
Yeah, that was pretty quick work if we completed three days before we started, yeah. I think probably should be around the other way.
Even if you have the way around, it's pretty good. Oh, that's a private survey. No, it's actually right.
Yeah, it is correct, yeah, that's right, yeah, because that was from a private survey. So they approved it on the 24th and 6th and it was received by us on the 27th.
Oh, that's all right, that makes more sense then.
Even so, that's not bad turnaround by then. Any other questions? If not, there's a recommendation. Councillor Dorridge, do you move the recommendation?
I am.
Anyone wish to speak to a recommendation? If not, I'll put it, all those in favour. 4.2, planning matters approved. Any questions of the officers? If not, is anyone willing to move the recommendation? Councillor Armstrong, councillor Holgwood, do you wish to speak to it? Councillor Armstrong, anyone wish to speak? Not, I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour, against pass. 4.3, local government performance reporting framework update.
Thank you, Mr May. Just very briefly, this is just for information purposes of council, we're required each year to report on the local government performance reporting framework to our local government Victoria. This covers a whole range of indicators across council areas of service performance. I guess the haven't taken up major councils, we're going to report very openly to community about our performance in those areas, we'll have a whole suite of other performances in case we develop over time as well, but these form the backbone because everyone's required to report on, to the department around the Know Your Council website. So what I've done this year is we've, we've actually taken the process very seriously. We have, for the, I think we're very comfortable with the fact the numbers we provide this year are totally accurate to the system and we've also provided quite lengthy at times responses or, I guess, commentary about the, about the KPIs as they've been reported because in the past, a critique we've made around a number of councils, including our own, is that we've made very poor responses to that commentary, that isn't very informative when the community go and want to say to Know Your Council website, understand what's happening. Things, very simple phrases from the accounts played don't really work there, we need to use comprehensive language that people understand to explain what the indicators are. We're very frank about areas where we need to improve our performance and we've, we've actually improved in a range of areas this year as well. So that was just for council information, Mr May.
Any questions with the officers?
Just on the health inspections, and it might not be related to it, but I'm sure the CEO will let me know, there's been an issue at the moment about the measurements on different, well, what would I probably call them, servings as you're getting in hotels and things and I remember years ago, we used to go around and we used to check all the measurements and things, councillor Bill probably remembers those days, I'm just wondering if there's any thought about bringing that back, our health inspector used to go around and do very strong.
I was attacked on that, I'm not sure how white's measures managing, oh, you've been diddled on your seven ounce beers at the Ararat. Councillor Holgwood.
No, I was just getting the peaceful conversation and those sort of things and they're saying that we're not getting what we're paying for anymore.
Yeah.
And it just brought back that fact that, you know, we used to receive those reports and we were very tight on the fact that, you know, we kept everybody on track, but it seems to have disappeared.
Could I report that one in the next brief? Just I'll get some information on how that works, yeah.
Yeah, but.
It was very strong.
It's important because back in the 16th century of France, when they, when they made bread.
Yes.
If the baker short, short served the dozen, they could actually be severely dealt with. In fact, that's where the term baker's dozen comes from because they give you a dozen rolls and they throw one more in just to make sure that the weight of bread that you're getting was more, not less, because these guys were dealt with fairly severely.
About as severely as you could deal with.
Dead, they can be killed for shorting on bread.
We're taking that request on notice, which we will.
I can work.
Did I actually move for, if no one has, is there a mover in seconds? Do you recommend that, Bill, go, can you, do you wish to speak to it?
No.
You've already done that, haven't you? Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour, thank you. Section 86, committee minutes reports. There's a list of them there. No one's got anything to add to it? There's a recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Councillor Holgwood, move, second. Councillor Holgwood, anyone wish to speak to it? Councillor Holgwood, no. Not, put the recommendation, all those in favour, it's passed. Advisory committee, read the minutes. Number one, which is the one I attended a couple of weeks ago, last Wednesday, any questions on that? If not, there's a recommendation, move, councillor Armstrong, thank you. Councillor Dorridge, second, I saw your fingers move. Anyone wish to speak to it? If not, I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour. Assembly of councillors. List of them there. Any questions on the assemblies? If not, there's a recommendation, move councillor Holgwood, second councillor Bradford, does anyone wish to speak to it? If not, I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour, pass. Councillors' reports, councillor Dorridge.
We were so glad, I think, the community meal in Stellen, which was organised by the Red Cross here from Ararat and it was very well attended, about 130 people there, met a few people, met a few new friends and it was quite informative for me, the community's getting together, it's good to see.
Thank you. Councillor Peppman?
I've got nothing to report.
Councillor Holgwood?
Yes, Mr May. I was just wondering if there's any further news on the graffiti problem, are we doing anything about it or is there anything we can do about it?
Is that a report or a question?
It's a question because we talked about it extensively at the last meeting and I'm just wondering if there's been any move to do.
Go for your report and at the end I'll ask the CEO if you've got other issues you want dealt with.
Yes, I have.
Right, I am.
I'd also, on the 26th of July, I attended the annual dinner at the Arat City Sits and I mention this because they've had some work done courtesy of the federal government and the Ararat Rural City assisted as well and the amount of work that was done there by the council and the attitude of the staff, they've asked me to report back to this council meeting, what have thrilled they are with what went on. I also attended the Ararat Rofu Chang'e Dinner with you, the new president, Mr May. The Arat Police attended the Green Hill Lake meeting just recently and they were seeking permission to hold another mud run, it was very successful last year and they have engaged a lot of youth to actually get involved this year to see what they would like. Police have also reported that the lake is up to the 1.2 metre mark, still running in for Morriacken Road and the jetty is actually floating, which the Rofu Club also put in. We did have a problem with the gas bottles and the solar panel being removed, the Arat Police are checking out to see what happened.
The Ararat Police are checking that to see what happened. On August 3rd and 10th, I attended Geelong and Ballarat to watch some of our local youth play basketball. And just to say that some of the local youth are absolutely outstanding with what they're doing. So it's great for Ararat and it's great for everyone in town to actually see that happening. On Sunday, the 4th, I witnessed my son trying to play football. Quite a comical match, but a great fundraiser for the healthy families function that was held for this year. So it was a really good day and I know the number of us were all there. And on the 8th of August, I attended the Alexander Hall Committee Annual Meeting. And once again, they had a lot of thanks for the council, for the effort of the staff and their assistance in what they do. And also the fact that we've got Wayne Gosin as the president now. And Gosin's doing an enormous amount of work down there, which is fantastic. On Sunday, I attended the Trash and Treasure, which was for the Golden Gateway Festival. And the Ararat Ladies Probes Club, I attended that meeting. And I was given by Julie a very big pile of council documents to actually take and hand out. They all disappeared. And the ladies were saying how they love to sit there and read what's actually going on. So that was great, so I'll take lots more of those if I can. And the Arat Show Society has had incredible support this year from everybody in town, which is great to know. Now, one of those things I'd like to bring up, Mr. Mayor, if I may, is that recently there was a story in The Herald Sun about the football story, about how it was invented by the Aborigines. Well, I have some documents here that actually tell you the true story of the football and got true documents with it. And I don't know what we can do about it. But I feel really offended with the fact that Tom Mills, who was from Ararat, started this whole process off. And all of a sudden, Melbourne's decided that it started off by another organisation, which I won't name here tonight. But it's very sad when you think that when Tom Mills decided this whole process, the idea was that he played cricket. He was an excellent cricketer and what he wanted was he wanted to keep all of his men fit in the winter. And what he came up with was what is now known as football. And the original ideas in the book about all the rules and regulations, half of them are still in vogue. Like you mark the ball, you're not allowed to be touched and all those sorts of things. A lot of go over the line. But it's an incredible book. And I must admit that I was always a soft touch for anything that was local. But that's a really good book and it really does tell the story about Tom Mills and football. Tom Mills.
Tom Will.
Mills, sorry. Yeah, Tom Mills. Yeah, sorry. But yes, the moistened boy, yeah, he is. And as I said, it's the original scripts from the diaries of the family. So very proud of that one, been very annoyed with The Herald Sun when they come out with great fans of the stories like "Footy History Query: No Evidence to AFL's Linking of the Game's Origin to Moon Book". Well, it's Tom Mills and it'll always be Tom Mills. And I'll stand by that and the book tells it all. Haven't watched the video, hasn't even been out of the cover because my daughter took the video player, but I will watch it. But very interesting, but very frustrating when you read stuff like that a bit. Trying to take something else up there. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Incidentally, he was also the first person to take a cricket team to England and they were apple shots. He was.
And they won.
And they won.
And they did, all in the book.
If you believe what's in The Herald Sun, you're a bit wrong.
Well, come on, arguing with people.
No, we noticed that.
Councillor Armstrong?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll go back to just what this section of the meeting is about, which is actually an overview of meetings attended. And I've attended three meetings in the previous month. One was the Red Cross AGM for the Lake Bollock branch. And service awards were given to three long-serving, particularly long-serving members at that meeting. The Western Highway Action Committee meeting was held in Ballarat on the 9th of August. And a couple of main points to bring home from that meeting is the continuing advocacy that council, member council, council members, I should say, of that committee are doing to lobby for the Fixing Country Roads Programme funding, which is very important to all rural councils. And also the sharing of information of local municipality knowledge around heavy vehicle limits on bridges, particularly with vector roads. That meeting provides an important forum to keep that dialogue open between agencies and municipalities. And on the 12th of August, I was part of a meeting with yourself, Mr. Mayor, with Torrens University, which was an interesting opportunity. They were essentially exploring what it is that regional students, potential and current students, might be looking for in tertiary educational services. So it was a bit of a factifying mission on the part of those visitors to council. Thank you.
Councillor Brayford? Councillor Hall?
As usual, there are lots of things happening in the community that you get involved with. But the only thing that I'll report is that the mayor and I attended the AGM of the supporters, the support group for the residents of Low Street this afternoon. Saw a very interesting fashion parade. Was quite impressed by their meeting and their report. And it just highlights how much work the small groups, community groups and volunteers do in our community that keeps our community rolling along and it's all silent, it's all in the background. They do a fantastic job.
Well, I started this month on the 20th of December, the opening of fantasies at the gallery. If anyone didn't go to see that, you missed a fascinating opening. On the 29th of September, I attended a forum with staff at Ballarat in relation to emergency management for the... I'm a GM, just can't remember what the acronym is now. But the state government department and the MAV. Then on the 31st of July, I went to the MAV Local Government Bill Reform Meeting, where two council representatives could attend. And the minister addressed some of the issues as he saw his reform of the Local Government Act. And then I had in the afternoon, the Ministerial Meeting. On the 1st of August, I had the Laurel Hall Meeting, the annual meeting. On the 2nd of August, the Arc Toba Library, which is always fascinating group they are. On the 7th of August, the Emergency Management Committee here. And it's like many things, when fire season hasn't, isn't honest, people sort of drop off the meetings. When fire season's approaching, they'll start coming again. So it'll be interesting. 8th of August, Elmhurst Hall Committee. I also attended Torrens University. On Sunday, I had the privilege with the mayor of Pyrenees, unveil the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at Beaufort. It was the coldest Sunday morning I've had for a long time. I think I had my suit on and a jacket over the top. I also went to Eva Graham's Health Service Resident Support Group, Low Street. It's the longest title. But I'll just make a comment on that group. I think you don't realise how big an organisation health service is. They throw around figures of 200, so. And then you go in there and see how many people there are and how they're fully dependent or partially dependent on staff. They are big employers and they're a really compassionate group, as are the group that had their annual meeting. And I must declare it a certain conflict of interest because they work very well with erosion coming casually. So we do very well. I also attended other meetings, but I was wearing different hats at the time. And I'll leave them where they are. Thank you. There's no notes of motions? There's no urgent business? We're now going to go to confidential for a short time, isn't it? As to deal with tenders and contractual matters. The open meeting will now be closed by, but members of the public are wanting to rejoin the council meeting following the recommencement of this meeting. There's a recommendation there to close the meeting, is there anyone here? Councillor Brayford, councillor Hall, all those in favour? It's passed.